All right, well, welcome. It's now, I guess, seven o'clock on Tuesday, July twenty seventh, and I want to call the order of this regular business meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I want to once again inform everyone that we have made the decision to continue requiring masks to be worn at our school board meetings. Based on the increasing number of COVID cases, the number of people, including children who remain unvaccinated, and the prevalence of the new variant, I would think this is safest to make. So I want to thank you in advance for complying with our mask requirement. So to begin this evening, will everyone please rise and join? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, in a just called with liberty and justice for all. All right, next slide on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt what has been written or proposed any changes.
I need to adopt the agenda as written.
All right, it's been moved to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, all right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is three point oh one public comment. As is our practice, I will now recognize the audience members who wish to share comments with the board and who have appropriately signed in for that purpose. So Jackson, I have Anya Milton, is there anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, Anya?
Thank you. Board and administration staff, I'm Anya Milton, Ferndale community member and special parent. I'd like to take a moment to share a few excerpts from a PhD student from the University of Wisconsin named Nicholas Daniel Hartlap on critical race theory. Critical race theory fixates on historically marginalized populations within urban school settings and larger society. It implores all of us inside and outside the educational arena to equalize the educational experiences of students of color. It is accurate and justified to declare that the educational milieu of black and brown faces needs to be radically improved. This radical improvement will be made through critical research. The four of the five tenets of critical race theory focuses on the concept of storytelling and counter storytelling. This dichotomy, excuse me, this dichotomy is predicated upon the belief that schools are neutral spaces that treat everyone justly. However, close examination refutes this, simply evaluating graduation rates accomplishes this. School curricula continues to be structured around mainstream white middle-class values and therefore continues to be widening of the racial achievement gap. Authors Hackman and Rousher in their book Equity and Excellence in Education states often underfunded mandates across the nation leave many educators wondering how best to serve their students, particularly those who do not fit into the mainstream profile or curriculum. In today's schools, the needs of students with disabilities and members of other marginalized groups often go unmet, and as such, more inclusive educational approaches need to be adopted to ensure that all students have access to a solid education, end quote. I speak in favor of including critical race theory within the Ferndale School District because it will proffer the people of color an opportunity to examine their current positions in order to increase their social capital and cultural wealth. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Anya, for your turn. All right, please note that in addition to providing time for public comment at our meetings, Dr. Quinn continues to write answers to questions received from the community during the previous month and post those under the public comment item on our board docs agenda and also on the website. The next item on the agenda, four point oh one, is swearing in of our new student school board representative, Jazzy Gonzalez. Jazzy, I would like to invite you to come forward with Dr. Quinn's meeting.
Well, Jazzy, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Okay, I, Gonzalez.
I, Jazzy Gonzalez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the laws of the state of Washington.
And the policies of the Ferndale School District.
And the policies of Ferndale School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The responsibilities of the office.
The responsibilities of the office.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Congratulations and welcome to this school board.
Quick photo, guys.
Let Jackson take a quick photo. Okay. Jazzy, that'll be your place.
Jazzy, welcome. We're glad to have you on board and we look forward to working with you for the next two years. All right, the next item, five point oh one, is a standard report on our bond projects. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Duvall to see if there are any updates. Thank you. So we've got a few good news items this month. So we just received one of the agenda items later on the second agenda is part of the reform process, which is the process that we used to apply for state match funds for the high school project. And we were just informed by Heidi Hansen with CSG, she was kind of going through the numbers again, finishing up the application, and we're eligible for another, an extra million dollars. Million dollars, so that was a good news for the day.
So the total?
Total.
Twenty-one point four four million. Yep.
So that's about a bit total amount plus that, that's about, I mean.
Well, eighteen, nineteen percent, it was a hundred and twelve.
That's.
So we're getting another twenty-one point four.
That's awesome.
So it is very awesome.
Very awesome. So, yeah, that's really good. So also, next September, the bond oversight committee is applying to conduct is that their next version of the quarterly report. So hopefully everybody's prepared and ready for that. If not, then I can share a change in plans if we need to. The other piece of good news that we found out was that the underground fuel tank that was found by the CTE, the current CTE building in the parking lot there, a bit of an unexpected location, though it has been removed and all the soil testing has come up negative. So we did not have any leakage from the tank, which is a tremendous relief in terms of mitigating contaminated soils in a very tricky spot. So we're very happy with the way that turned out. The other item is the cornerstone. Their construction partners have offered to provide a tour if you would like to come see what's going on at the job site. So August twenty-sixth, Thursday, August twenty-sixth, at noon and at one. So because we can't have more than a couple of you at a time, we've got two different, two different tours.
And if you all five want to go, we'll try to get you out another time.
We will generate a third time if everybody can make it and wants to.
And we do noon because we hope that works for you, Lynda.
So it's a good time. They've got some of the footings are still exposed and not all buried. They're going to be doing some slab pour. Geo appears will be completed. There's going to be a lot happening on the site. So you'll be able to see everything before it's all buried and while some, some new stuff is going on as well, as well.
See, we can accommodate you too.
Yes.
I think.
Yes. So please either get in touch with Jackson or probably Jackson if you'd like to come and which time works best. And if you're flexible at all, depending on, you know, who all can make it, if everybody wants to come, I'll definitely answer. That won't be a problem, so. So we've got a couple of problems. Any questions for Mark on this?
The other thing I would just add is that we're, we're also starting to meet regularly with the furniture, the furniture procure. And so we, right now, we're planning a, I think it's called a furniture fair. It's, she said it takes twelve to fourteen weeks to get the samples, but our intent is to have a furniture fair at Ferndale High School so that everyone can go in and within the choices that we can afford, talk about, you know, what's their favorites and.
So would that be a community?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Staff, students, community.
That's what we've talked about all the way along. You know, I'm sure it won't be a consensus, but everybody can have influence.
Invariably, there will be people that didn't know about it that don't like that color.
Well, or, or that want completely opposite things. And you could, so, but we are going to provide that opportunity next. So that, I brought that up because it's exciting to me.
All right, well, thank you, Mark. And you can find out more information about our bond projects and the bond oversight committee on our website and also in the weekly bond updates that Dr. Quinn writes. Last week's was one hundred and seven, was one hundred and seventeenth bond oversight update.
I'm getting Jackson on board to continue those.
The next item on our agenda is five point oh two, and this is a review and discussion of the superintendent's monitoring report for operational expectations policy number nine, which focuses on the learning environment. We received this report at our June meeting, so at this time, I'm going to open up for discussion.
Well, I'm happy to start again, if that's okay. Once again, this is fabulous. I think it's an education in itself to read it and to have it all in one document and review it is just stunning to me. I was excited to read the part where that MTSS actually incorporates social emotional learning and PBIS because I was sort of like, oh, we're doing a new thing. And so to have that documented here for me to understand and see was, was really helpful and because I've been excited about PBIS and I've been excited about it a few years. So I'm glad to see that MTSS incorporates all of that. I really look forward of going deeper into the discipline data, which is actually the last. I just think, I just think that's something that we have to keep looking at and be aware of. One question, one of my questions, the one that I can think of right now, has to do with, and I'm sorry, John's not here because I think he could have been helpful. So each year, we talk about how the anti-bullying stability policy are reviewed at the beginning of the school year with the staff. And I just wondered what that process was like because I could see where it's like, oh, yeah, that, we're reading it, it's like, oh, yeah, I read this last year. But do the staff really take time to reflect on what they're in there and their own perceptions and behaviors? Because it talks about trying to recognize and address behaviors, attitudes, and actions that constitute an impact of difficulty. And I can see that looking at students, but I also think staff needs to look at themselves. So is there time in the beginning of the year process with what's on there?
I would say probably not enough. I mean, I would say it's probably more cursory than, and it's like a lot of things, get it out, need to get it out. But we have made it a practice to have people read it once a year, probably not enough.
I think that point of self-reflection, though, it's so easy for us to see faults in others, that's actually reflect on yourself or what your own biases are or your own ignorances.
When was this? The stability policy or the.
Yes.
Stability policy was put together by Paul and Paul has two or three years. I should remember, but. Yeah, because it was, okay.
I also agree with Jan and more dissection of this was paid up. And I'd like to think about how we can get more stakeholder voices, particularly from the Latino community. I think we have had, and that I am in no way saying any fault whatsoever, but I think we have a great voice for our native community here. And I think we need other voices for our other populations. And while I wish I could speak for them, I don't think I can. I, so I would love to draw in more stakeholder voices. Any ideas on how to do so?
March of seventeen.
March of seventeen. Okay.
I love that the graduation rate, I appreciated that the graduation rate between white and people of color, that percentage-wise were pretty darn close. And it was interesting to see that income was the greatest is where the gap was.
I did have a question on that chart, though, on page eight, because it says the total student enrollment of white is seventy-eight percent, and Kelly was helpful before the meeting started, and our white enrollment is like fifty-nine percent.
Yeah, I think there might be some barriers.
Yeah, we, just to look, look at that chart again to see if we've got rhythm.
I think that also though depends on, because in my work world, white also include fourteen hours.
And that's what we were asking, but we weren't sure what it was, so.
Who looks for?
Yeah, one of the comments I had was the reporting of students of color sent to the office, the non-black students. And with the non-color, no, let's just say white kids getting, yeah, in trouble, just as even more, that more of the colors were sent to the office. And that turned up in this report. And that was very concerning to me. So I don't know how we can address that, look at it. Well, maybe policies need to be changed.
I have no idea.
What I, what I will say is it's something we've been tracking for about eight years. And not that this is eight years, but we've gone, Kelly, what's the, we've gone from.
And twenty-three percent in fifteen to sixteen to ten percent in eighteen, nineteen.
So the gap has gone from twenty-three percent to ten percent. So it's, we're making some progress. Our goal is for there not to be any statistical difference, but it is definitely something that we've been looking at, and it will fall into the MTSS. The whole thing with MTSS is it doesn't take, it looks at a kid as a whole package, not PBIS over here, discipline over here, and social emotional over here, and academic here, reading. And so we just hired, for instance, a behavior specialist for our district to be part of our MTSS team. So that there are ways to look at supporting kids and changing their behavior rather than just sending to the office.
Yeah. Well, my concern is when we look at the whole picture, you look at the graduation rate, again, you look at the income, the barriers, all of that, and this is on that written in this report. So it's a, it's, you know, public record. My big deal right now is I'm trying to do a campaign for Ferndale. And you guys know how I feel about Ferndale, and I'm trying to get over that. And we want our kids to be successful. Just like anybody else, like everybody else. So when I have to go campaign to parents and this shows up, how do I explain it? And then they come with their stories and whatever, but how am I going to say it has changed or it's better or it's, you know, we've revised this and that and the other thing? And we want our enrollment to be up, of course, because again, it comes to the budget and then those numbers rise. But how can I convince? I had a grandma sitting next to me, she was telling me about her girls having, her grandkids having problems. I was trying to convince her, send them to Ferndale. I can't believe I'm saying that, but send them to Ferndale. But she says, well, my girls, you know, whatever, they have opinions of their own. And I want to say we are going to do what? To make it a better place for all kids. I know we've put in place all kinds of programs, we're hiring a whole bunch of people and people of color, that's why I keep trying to tell them, and it's going to be better. I know it is, but when something like this shows up, and it is public record, how am I going to explain that?
I think just like, just like Linda was saying, how it's gone from twenty-three percent to ten percent, and we have work to do, definitely, but maybe having a graphical representation of the change over time and that things are getting better and we are getting closer. Because while it would be fantastic if next year, there's no statistical difference between anything and everybody is treated absolutely the same, it's, with the reality, unfortunately, in our society is change takes time. But I think if we can graphically show, because it's easier to read a picture, maybe that might be a way to help convince people that Ferndale is changing and it's getting better and we are headed in the right direction, and we're going to get there.
I, I put out messages about students who want to go to college, become a teacher, become something, you know, and come back to Ferndale. They're like, you know, parents and grandparents who had their own experience, or like, I'm afraid to even go shopping in Ferndale. And you, you know, you do your best, you try to do your best, but I hope this turns around.
Well, I agree. I think looking historically at the data to hear and not hearing this as sort of a starting point, this is a, this is a point on our journey. And the journey is different than it was five years ago. And so it's a journey, and the journey continues, but not to focus so much on where we are right now, but where we've come from and where we're going to go.
Well, I think, you know, personally, I think if we put out a message, you know, for recruiting and captain, you know, all that, for Ferndale, for enrollment, the board needs to put out a statement of some kind saying, you know, we're improving, we're, we're doing the best we can, you know, we're hiring this person. I know we've said that before, but like anybody else, you know, you've got to read it or to see it, you've got to, you know, to believe it, you've got to see it. So a statement of some kind, maybe from the president, saying, new and approved or whatever. That makes a lot of sense. Then I have something to, you know, back me up a little.
And, you know, Jesse, I liked that the part about recruiting teachers because that's, that's been one of my soapbox topics for a long time, is we need to, we need to recruit kids to be teachers who didn't like school the way it was, not just the ones who loved the way it was, so they'll figure out how to fix it for kids who, you know, we, and so that's what I mean, grow your own is before. And we've been in contact with, there's a letter of support from Justin Gilery at the Northwest Indian College, and they're willing to partner with us. And the whole purpose of that grow, our own program is to try to recruit Native American and Latin, Latin and other students to go into the teaching profession so that they will come back and like fix it or, you know, and they'll bring their experiences that were great and say, I'm not going to let this happen for the next, just like they're being on board. But, and so that's exactly the purpose of that purpose.
It's fighting that, like, general society message of, I can't wait to get out of here type of thing, though. I think a lot of, you know, families might think my experiences were bad, and so my hope for my child is that they can leave. And you have to, you have, you're competing against that, and it's a strong.
It's, I know, but, but also I think, you know, we need to do a better job of selling our profession and telling people that we don't want people who want to keep things just the way it is and letting folks know what a teacher makes. It's a good salary and a good job and, and that we're not inviting just people who want to, who are just like us and want to, just, so, I mean, that's part of the message. We're not going to get everybody.
Right.
But I think we will recruit some if they truly believe that's the purpose.
I think being upfront and proud of that message of that we want things to change is fantastic, though. I think that's great.
Well, I think that goes even to this report is not just looking at, one aspect, the numbers of those differences, says about those differences in the statements we made is what we're working on. If you just look at the numbers, like you said, graphic representation helps to see the change in recruitment, but this also talks about goals and the direction we want to move and, and how we're looking to get there.
I think, I think what Jesse said about a message from the board would fit nicely with our whole MTSS approach. Now, a board, we probably need to schedule a study session where we can spend at least an hour talking about MTSS and universal design for learning, but then to have the board say, we really endorse this because it's going to address some of, Kelly says every day, it's a strengths-based model. It's going to find out what you're good at, and we're going to click just hammering on what you aren't good at necessarily, and that the whole goal is to figure out how to remove barriers and provide supports so that every single kid feels included, welcomed, and supported. So anyway, I think that counts. And that's a good suggestion.
I'd appreciate a study session on that. After reading through here, MTSS, I feel like I have a fairly good idea of what it is, but it felt to me that MTSS is very much a strength-based, and this is what you're going, and we're going to build you up on what you're best at. And PBIS felt very much more of a punitive slash thing. So, and I'm, I'm sure that's wrong because I don't think Ferndale does positive type stuff, but just knowing the difference makes me, I do benefit from a study session.
And we're not, we're actually not leaving PBS, we're just folding it into, yeah, I, I would, we've got great people who can put in a ninety minutes probably, because I think, Mark, when you came away from the June meeting, you, you said you had a better, way better understanding, and so I'm using you as the.
Yeah.
Went in without a whole deep knowledge and, yeah.
Yes, I thought it was extremely helpful.
So those of who are here, what does the acronym mean?
Multi-tiered system of support.
Okay.
And so it, and, you know, acronyms can just be clumsy and get in the way, but it, what it really says is that, like I said, we're retooling the way we think about things. First of all, part of it is to be inclusive. We, for too long, if a kid didn't function at a high level in the classroom, rather than ask the teachers to adapt, you send the kid somewhere else, you know? And so it's how, giving teachers the skills to, that's where universal design for learning comes in, is giving teachers the tools to design classroom experiences that will allow kids to succeed at whatever level or whatever support thing. And it, and, you know, your realtor is the support. If you, you know, one of our teachers was saying. Uh, if you, you know, one of our teachers was saying she went online to be thinking and noticed how many different ways there were for her. She could watch a video on the screen. She could read a description. She could get into a chat with people. It's just saying, okay, we want to access kids what they know. And so we need to provide lots of options for them to do it and kids are successful. And so, but, but anyway, and PBIS stands for Positive Behavior and Interventions and Support. And all of these models, there's RTI, which stands for Response to Intervention. All of them are based on a triangle. And all of them say that all, all people, all kids, all, everybody needs certain things. All kids need to know what are the behavior expectations in school and they might need to have more than somebody tell them they need to have a chance to practice it. Some kids in the middle tier um need more. Whether it's math skills, whether it's social emotional learning, whether it's behavior support. Some kids in there are going to need a little extra for whatever reason. And then some kid, a few kids are going to really need intensive. Even the ones who need the intensive support still need the base too. We don't take them somewhere else and they miss all the base. So how do we build our system? And like I said, look at a whole child. So it's not, are you a reading problem or a behavior, but you know, you're a kid. And so where are the obstacles? First of all, we're not going to talk about your problems, we're going to talk about strengths and where you need supports, but getting out of our silos to be able to do that.
I'm envisioning these triangles as like mountains and depending on where you need the support, your mountain might be in a different place. So it's more of a mountain range of support.
Yeah, it, that's a, that's a good analogy.
I had another analogy that was really helpful to me about similar to a dentist, right? We all go and get our regular checks, our cleanings, our, those are routine things that we all need. They're universal. We all need those things. However, there might be a time where you might need a filling. So yes, you're still need those regular supports from the dentist, but I may need to schedule a follow-up appointment to go get that filling. So it doesn't take away the other pieces, but it might mean that I need to do this, but I'm still getting the other piece. Or it might be some ongoing supports for a period of time or a crown and you might need a little bit more than just a filling. And if that's the case, then you're getting what you need. And then for whatever period of time that is that you're getting that treatment, but you're not.
You're not in the filling class forever.
Yeah, and you might need a root canal. That's what you're kind of going through for the rest of your life.
No, I, I don't know if the analogy works, but I'm not sure as much as most of us love dentists. That's uh, speaking of the tiers, one thing I noticed um that said on here when we were reviewing or going through, it specifically said that tiers two and tiers three do not include parent representation. And I was just curious as to what.
I think that's more at a district. Um, right now, certain buildings do have parent representation on the tier two committee. So as a district, entire district team, we don't have that representation. However, individual buildings um for the most part do have a parent representative on the tier two setting. But the tier three setting tends to be more confidential in nature where individual students' needs are being discussed. So the tier two level, we may be talking about, hmm, this time of day, we're seeing more behaviors. What are some things that we can be doing? Or this location at this time of day, we're seeing more physical aggression. So what are some strategies we can put in place? But tier three is more of this kiddo is having.
Really a problem and we're not going to have other people's marriage.
Right? For a number of reasons. This report on confidentiality.
I actually have that as one of my commendations since I really appreciate the district's commitment to privacy. Um, while also giving the best educational um learning environment to every kid. I mean, privacy is really, really important to kids. Um, they need that protection and it makes me feel good that the school district is committed to that privacy.
And from the other aspect though, those kids that do need that extra support, then is there's communication.
Their families are involved in those plans. So once those plans are developed, parents are very much a part of that. Um, and some plans are, you know, once we go up those tiers or even check in on a daily basis depending on the need of the kiddo. So absolutely individual parents are involved in those plans. It's just not representative on a general committee.
I had a question on um monitoring indicator one point one where the panorama questionnaire was talking about students saying they experienced supportive relationships at school, seventy-six percent in twenty twenty prior to the pandemic. In spring twenty twenty-one, forty-one percent of secondary students and fifty-three percent of elementary students. Obviously, they weren't at school in twenty twenty-one, so I mean, that adds impact. But my question was, if you're saying they're not getting the supportive relationships at school, have we in this question, we asked them what they need? And there's a question of are you getting what you're getting and they say no. Do we follow up and say what do you need or is it just?
There is not that detailed, like next step to it.
I would love to have that. And what I have to say about the panorama survey is that we were on a roll. We just got started with it. Remember in two thousand nineteen, we made the push per cell. Panorama was going to be our, one of our measurements. And when you do a survey like that, one of the things when you start analyzing is you go, okay, where do we go, need to go deeper, where do we need to find more? And then we get struck by a pandemic, kids are gone. And first the levy failure, we canceled Panorama and the levy failure. And so we, we haven't gotten the full benefit out of that yet. Would you say that's?
I would completely agree. We're really looking forward to capitalizing on what it has.
Know what's there. We started having conversations about, okay, we didn't, we didn't even do a great job of asking exactly the same questions from one time to the next. It makes it even harder. Um, there was very poor controls on the twenty, on the one that we did last. So we, we shared what we have, but it's a snapshot. You're exactly right. There's, it, it, what it does is reveal where we need more information.
It was, it was um sad to read the numbers and then if somebody tells you they're not doing well and you don't follow up with them, it was like, that's hard for. So.
I would say we did, um, our counselors did a nice job of checking on who are those kids that the the survey itself didn't lend itself to like a drop down, but you know, what are you, have you indicated that? But I would say our teachers and counselors were monitoring those numbers or monitoring those percentages and even making those comparisons. Um, and so that was done at the building level, um especially by our counselors. But we're working right now, um, saying that when we're meeting, Bay is following us from Hawaii today. So we, she's watching here. So we are right now already trying to build the windows for it so we can be very intentional and making sure that what we're getting is consistent throughout the year and we can capitalize on the full capabilities of the program. So we're looking forward to next steps.
And I um, I don't think you were here more than there, Jesse, when when we had a full year with our elementary counselors and they were putting out annual reports, but they were really using this data to go deep and it's, it's just not the same thing. I'm sorry.
Okay, that's.
There's a I would like to hear from Kong and Jesse in the students of the learning number. Uh, if they have any comments.
I don't know if Jesse even got. Oh, and I don't know, Kong, did you read it?
It's like a general.
Oh, so more general question. Doesn't have to be on the report.
Do you feel like the environment at the high school is supportive of new learning?
Uh, uh, for me, I have um um, I have like a speech about that on the way, but I will definitely have something done by our summer.
I just want to make sure to have a voice.
Jesse, how about you? How's your experience? I mean, you're just a sophomore, so you know. Going to be a junior.
Yeah, she is. She, she's, yeah, once you get to sophomore year, you're a junior. I, I really for like the first few months. And I, I guess while I was there, it was like, okay, the teacher's been really like connected, it's like really one-on-one all that much. And then once COVID hit, it didn't really, like again, again, like lost us. So. So you had, you transferred into Fernville at the beginning of sophomore year?
No, I actually came to Fernville in my eighth grade year. So like pretty much all I have is the full year I've been burned up.
So at the end of the freshman year, the pandemic struck.
Oh, yeah.
So she was there from September to March.
Yeah.
And then from March for a year and then a little bit last spring. So, yeah.
I didn't even go back last spring.
And she was, yes, that's right, you were remote. So probably not.
Well, that kind of tells us though that because kids are a lot younger than us, I mean, their school, it's a big part of their lives, studying year and a half, isn't it? Almost all your high school. So you may have been one of the people, I'm not saying put your answer first, but yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just gonna shut it.
I appreciate, Melinda, that you said one point one, because what I found out I was missing in, in these is that there are so many points that if we can find a way to letter them or roman numeral them or something.
Okay, remember somewhere in it where they were called out like a one point one and then I would count them down.
The one one.
Yeah.
Speaking of things beyond the interpretation and such, the other thing I noticed as I was going through is some of them said the superintendent will ensure. And then others went to there were these second, the superintendent may not tolerate. So it's sort of like, well, yeah, I've decided maybe I'll tolerate that today. Maybe I won't. And I was wondering if we should be consistent with superintendent will not.
I will tell you that that black language is what you adopted with yourself. But I, I agree. And I have just taken the liberty sometimes to make change.
That's what I was saying it for.
We can do that. I, but I, you know, I try to, but yeah, that's, I noticed that too.
And policy governments is always put in the negative, which is really frustrating, but that's why political governments was more appealing because there was the opportunity to, to put it in the profit.
Yeah. So, but it just seemed may, it's like, well, that, that in my mind is a wish you guys will not. Yeah, especially, you know. Um, and speaking of words, one, I did have um the one of these reports, it's like we have some documents. Um, the, the PBIS format is, they talked about consistency throughout things, um PJ. And it says that the three overarching expectations be safe, respectful, be responsible. But then they go to high school and it's, they're twice responsible with ready, which I sort of understand that, but.
I have to be responsible too.
You can't. Maybe I guess when you're not at school.
I didn't understand the response.
I just thought that was kind of a, it was curious as to if there were, what the switch, I mean, we've taught them responsible, responsible and then now you I don't know that the negate's responsible, but.
I, I think, um, I think the high school sees it um well as preparing kids to, for the next step. And that's why responsibility becomes readiness. When I was a high school principal in a three-year high school and I opened that new high school, you actually had forgotten about this. But um, we said that, um, we swing that sophomore's mission. Sophomores are learning, juniors for leading and we are L for seniors is leading. And we said, leaving a legacy, leaving behind, you know, we tried to move some of the leadership to the junior year, leaving a legacy, leaving the school to go on to the next step. And so I think the high school chose that as a way to signal to kids.
Is there any reason we couldn't just add it as a fourth and we still have responsible?
We could. They've done a lot of logo work and, I mean, we, we kind of let, let them personalize it a bit.
So the high school PBIS team, Bay is texting me. This is what it says. Uh, that was a high school PBIS decision to look at being ready for their future. Linda nailed it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can talk to you before and then Reece seems like the, you know, I.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense to just, you know, throwing out responsible. It's kind of like, oh, well, that's important too.
Well, I think to be ready, they thought we had to be responsible for getting ready.
Yes.
Uh, so. It talks about on page six, um our self-selection process um in middle school to some of the more advanced or different courses and pathways. And then it goes back and continues in high school. And I appreciate self-selection over, I need to jump through a certain group to get there. But on the other hand, if you don't think of yourself as someone who could take those classes, you may not self-selecting and you may be totally capable of doing the work. So I wonder what the process is to encourage that self-selection or to make sure that the students are trying these things, even though they don't really think maybe it's for them somehow. I, I don't want them to start changing themselves because they don't necessarily at their age have a vision for what they're going to be choosing.
And on that other note too, that if somebody selects to get on that track in freshman year, they often stay on the same sort of self-selection track. Whereas what if that person who's a freshman year, I'm not ready for this, I don't want to, but junior year, do we have it where they can jump in? Um, I've heard a lot of parents talking about how kids fall into a rut. And it's hard to get out of that, that track.
Well, and I think there's two other aspects that, that I think have been, one that was, was um sort of, there was evidence within the pandemic from it, you know, and when we reviewed some of our technology uh, learning and here were our goals for our elementary students, you know, but because we had to, we had to go technology all the time. They were getting up here when our, our original goals were here and it was like, we set the bar higher because we had to and they achieved it. I, I think on the other thing of the self-selecting is kids, and again, those two kids will achieve, if you put higher expectations there, they will get there or they're going to reach higher than if you put lower expectations. Um, and I've had the conversation with Linda before is I think sometimes our system gets in the way in the sense, the sense of I know of kids, maybe even my, my own at times who have looked at, well, in order to qualify for this scholarship or for this college or whatever, you need to have this GPA. So I can either take the harder class and potentially get a lower grade, even though a lower grade at the harder class, I'd probably learn more than easier class and get a higher grade, you know, so our, our system sort of sometimes perpetuates that and it's like, how can we get, you know, ultimately the goal is learning, you know, the grade is just a, a notation of, back into those test boards. How can we encourage kids to push themselves? Because they very well might accomplish things that they never knew they could or learn things that they're trying and beyond, putting those higher expectations.
It goes back to that opt-out versus opt-in.
Yeah.
I, I'm very excited to share with you some of the UDL stuff that we've been learning about.
Universal design for learning.
Talks about giving kids more selection in the classroom themselves and how, you know, selecting on every single project, maybe a harder project and changing the whole culture of, you know, uh, it will be interesting. I mean, it's not going to solve everything. It's not going to solve that KDA thing right now, although I think we can think about that too, but I, I think. Think about that too. But I, I think that, that selection piece of, been reading the book and it talks about it every, every single day. Be provided with selection and how far they're going to go and what they're going to do and be encouraged in a strength-based system to take a harder route.
Huh? Like the, the culture of how like, you know, trying to push kid more, you know, achieve more better results. Uh, for me, with how I, uh, with how the high school is, with like honors classes, like I feel like students like to achieve more. However, with that, the same time they want better reports, like for me, when I do classes, I always choose. I don't honor, even though I claim nothing, it's just higher, you know, knowledge. But, and, but you know, it's just that, you know, people just, uh, students just want to like have that saying like, oh, I did some honor passing up all the ways. And it just feels satisfying to do that.
That's what we want all students to do. But, yeah, I know there are states that actually give away to GPA for, Washington does not do that. And most colleges take that out in. Do that.
I appreciated just focus on relationships in here and the conversation about as students are coming back into the classroom, that the importance from the relationship. And supporting them where they are right now, not necessarily on getting through a certain amount of torture or a certain level of. Because I think, I think the teachers and students alike, this last year have to go through that. And we, we have to give that foundational support of, we're all in this together and let's see what each of us.
I like the call out to the be the one program and how the community can, in supporting the kids too. And it's. That a community member who wants to help out does not have to sit on school board or they don't have to, you know, take on an entire classroom or. One kid. Thank you.
I, I think it was hard with this report in some of the places. There's some were easy compliant, non-compliant. Compliant, but some of them were hard to really judge because it's like with the whole pandemic. How does that fit in? Because it just really, you know, it didn't fit. You look at it and go, well, that really wasn't. Was it, wasn't it?
But it's just the same thing that we were saying with grades.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, sometimes if a pandemic happens and you don't have the data for that one, then.
Yeah.
Non-compense, but it's, we understand that.
Yeah. Other comments?
So, yeah, I guess you do know. So this is, yeah, these are all a huge amount of work and, and I know how much I appreciate reading them. And you guys have talked about what can you do for others also see them like within the district? So what's going to happen to this? We've reviewed it. I know we're going to have a cover sheet. We'll, we'll tell you it's compliant and how many are and how many aren't. But what happens for the rest of the district? Because this is a wealth of information.
Well, and, and I'll be perfectly honest, what's happened so far is not much other than at this level. And it's, but just like you say, it's been a learning for you. It's been a huge learning for us. You know, we went into this inventing this. Don't think there was any report form or anything, you know, we, we invented it all and made up all those monitoring indicators and. And I look back and think, well, that. So now mostly Fay and Kelly and I, but also all of the faculty, I think that how you do get this. One of the things that Jackson just did for us was put up rebounders with all of these in hard copy. It's nice to have them online. Uh, it's nice to have them on, online, but sometimes I just need to thumb through the pages. And one of the things we're even doing to get ready for next, um, weeks. Retreat is pulling out some things, you know, I've said in several of these, hey, we're doing just what you shouldn't do. We're trying to retroactively figure out what data we have. And so we're right now, we're in the process of filling out, are pulling out things that we want our principals to track over the year so that, and so we have a better idea of some of the data. We've also talked about how, well, at the secondary level, for instance, with the discipline, I mean, not the dis- the dis- I mean, discipline in a way of subject matters. You know, the subject reports that Fay and I have talked about how those will become the property of the teachers of that. So, you know, when she, and, and I think Kelly, you have, you have one administrator in charge of each grade. And Fay has put one administrator in charge of each of the major discs. So there's a administrator is going to convene and go to the meetings on science and one on language arts. Obviously you have to get involved, but that, these reports, this one's a little more general. So I assume it would become part of our teaching and reading, leadership. Teaching and learning leadership teams at key levels, but we're finding a home for them. So that they go there and that people know what's in these reports and say, oh, I can, this is what they're measuring? Oh, we need to do that. So. That's what we're thinking about.
Okay. Cause I, I guess I, I think it's so much.
Well, and, and, but it could, it really is a valuable process. It really couldn't. We didn't, we couldn't have done it before now because we didn't know. I, I couldn't have done it before now. And so.
I would also mention that we're pulling, um, of our, our monitoring indicators from these and are including those also in our school improvement plans, like our district. They're being included there and that also is a format we're using with our school. And so. What, what we are trying to say, these are the things that are important to us that we're valuing. And we are not only identifying those in our plans at the district and school level, but we're also collecting data. So, you know, we're monitoring closely, showing those. That's the things that are important to us. So hopefully that will continue to conform these practices within the building.
I was just gonna say, because it feels like it, it needs to be circular. Like these are useful for the buildings, but then what the building do is useful to.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Exactly.
And along those lines, this is a way to allow. Brings from the story, I have an example, to pull out those snippets of things that are working on, um, that are popular, positive. Even throw that into our social media feeds with a link to the report. Hey, if you want to read more about this. Cause I know when we were originally doing this and looking at some of Bellingham's reports. They had, it was, you know, you'd go in there and it's like, wow, there were interesting things that you didn't know about. These you didn't know, go there. We went there because we were looking for it. And if we get people out, no, it's not going to be everybody's copy to read it, but. You know, getting that out there, showing what they're doing and just helping get the support. Yeah. Cause there is a lot of good stuff.
Well, and Jackson has copies of the books and I just gave Selena a copy of the books and we're there, you know, they, I, I told them that I wanted them to understand the structure of this. So that they do, you know. Or we quote, Jackson, I could sit down and he could pull out, but remember this is his, have you been here six weeks now?
Oh, um, yeah.
So, so, and Selena isn't really on, on the property yet, but we're trying to figure out how, how it can, exactly what you're saying, you know. The five of us know it's there. I go back and pull things out of there for something else I'm writing or grant or something, but. And I don't think it's too logical that everyone in the district is going to read every one of these. We'd have to give them a day off a month. You know, I mean, that, but, um. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even if you had five other people in the district that were reading these, it's like that becomes. Either ambassador, if they see things good, or it becomes an educated person that has a critique or, I mean, it's. Yeah.
Well, and again, it comes down to that conversation because the conversation of having. Curriculum education process results. Different now than what we had before, you know, but that's helping to and driving the direction. And yeah, we can expand that.
All right. I have to get any more comments? Thank you, Dr. Quinn, for this report and thank you board members for your comments tonight. If you have written comments. After, or you can email them to me later, and I'll summarize those and put them on a summary sheet and get it to Jackson at some point before next week. So as a reminder, we will vote on this policy report at our August meeting through the consent agenda, just as tonight we will be voting to accept the report on results policy 2.9. Where readiness, which we received at our main meeting and discussed at our June. That'll be on next one. All right. Next item on the agenda is 5.03. This is receiving our next policy monitoring report from Super Junior. So at this time I will call on Linda to tell us about the report she's preparing for us.
And the really good news is because you're not getting that report tonight, the items will be numbered. Because, because I. I didn't, um, I just, I was talking to Mark about, this is a report on financial planning, but this is quite as long as this one. But I talked to Mark about it today and when we, the last time we touched this report was in August of 2018. And I think you all know what kind of financial planning we've had to do since then and on all kinds of fronts. Because in August of 2018, we haven't even passed upon. And the, um. The policy itself, the part that you, we adopted through our process and the monitoring indicators that we wrote. Are woefully inadequate to tell any kind of story. It's a very lifeless kind of document that said, you got to report every month. And so I feel compelled to write a introduction that captures more of what financial planning has been in the last three years. And last night I just didn't feel up. And I thought you, this is a five. So I'll get it to you by August 3rd and I will go back in and number it.
I haven't seen it obviously, but I know like one of the conferences. Talking about values-based financial planning and maybe looking at some of those monitoring indicators. To reflect what our values are and if we are putting our money where, about this type of thing. Is that in there?
Well, it's in, it, it is in the interpretation of the policy and in the policy. But, but the monitoring indicators that you approved. When, when I wrote them, don't really hold us to account for that. The policy itself says that we will plan our finances so it supports your results and operational expectations policies. Which is where you express your values. However, there is not a single monitoring indicator that, um. Says whether we did or not. And we have spent a significant chunk of time during the last year trying to redo our district improvement plan. So that it does show how our policies are related to our goals or related to where we're spending our money. And so this is, this one's just going to need to be re, the next person can do a better job than I did on this one. I mean, but I do want to write. I want to write an introduction that I'm, I'm writing some of these to my, my successor as well, right? These are letters to the. Things that. Me, that I think need to happen. And so it's, it's in there, but it's not.
The last couple of years have really brought to light what our values are and our budget situation has really, like. Think about it harder. So, I mean, maybe before we were naive. We're not as naive anymore.
No, and I, I don't remember another three-year period of time where, where our ability to financially plan and manage has been more called into. Into service than, um, I mean, even, I would even go so far as to say the first time the cost estimator came to talk to us about the bond and said we were. Going to be $25 million short of delivering. And what Mark and I and others have done to make sure we're going to be delivering on that. Has tested our metal in this area and it is not reflected in the report. So.
Well, and I appreciate these reports, both the introduction and like the. Place where you talk about next week to look at or other things we need to do. And I think you're right. You are writing these to your successor at this point.
Yeah.
Cause we want it carried on.
Yeah.
And this will give them a roadmap.
Yeah. I'm, um. Okay.
I will say one place where our budget reflects our values, popped up on my Facebook page from I don't know how many years ago, collecting for the school supply drive. So we could give school supplies away. And that was such a, such a big event and I loved it, but it was not equitable. And how we've rolled those school supplies for, at least at the elementary level, it rolled it into where we put our money.
Well, I think we could give you another couple of days. We have a month, so I, I think, you know.
We have five weeks actually.
Yes.
Five weeks between this board meeting and that.
So I, I thank you. So thank you. Well, hard copies we sent.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. The next item on our agenda is 6.01, and this is the approval of the 2122 district budget. As a reminder, both the board and the public have had multiple opportunities to review and make comments on the district budget. As it was published several weeks ago on board docs. All the way through and it's, so. We have had budget development discussions on the agenda of several of our school board meetings since early spring and Lynn, Dr. Mr. Dibok and their team hosted a Facebook live session. And had questions and answers in June. So the final budget's been posted now for two weeks. And so, um. And as you know, we devoted a study session essentially to the budget last week. So we talked about it and talked about it and we held our public meeting hearing tonight. So. Uh, we are legally required to approve a balanced budget by August 31st. And, um, at this point, unless my fellow board members have additional comments or questions, I'm ready to entertain a motion to officially adopt the 2122 district budget.
I will put forth a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
All right. So it's been moved to approve the resolution number 10 dash 21, adopting the 2122 district budget. All those in favor, please say aye. Most. We have a budget. Motion carries. Yeah, I was going to say, thank you all for, I mean, Mark and team and everybody here, you've done a tremendous amount. Not only meeting with us, but meeting with other folks and being available. So thank you for, for all of that time that you've spent. We feel good about the strength of our financial situation. We're moving ahead in good stead. So hopefully. You know, the, the future will be bright for us budgetarily and we'll be able to continue the great work that we've done. Such good work. All right, Sharon. So the next items, several items are about, uh, it's a time for us to share things that are important and going on within our. Our collective lives. And so I will start with the student school board members. Jazzy, I'll call on Kong first.
So today I have three things to share. First, I got appointed to be a member of OYAC, which is the Legislative Youth Advisory Council.
Only eleven people in the whole state.
Uh, this, uh, this year there was about like around a hundred fifty applicants and I was one of them. I was really happy. It was really exciting. Um, we are appointed for two years. We will be learning about how the legislation works and the members will be working with the lieutenant governor and his administration on how to analyze, revise and recommend on policies. It will be impacting to student schools and also society as a whole. So, yeah.
I'm smiling really big over here. I'm so excited for you. Thank you, Congress. I'm excited for him and I'm excited for our area of the state because I don't know if there my son had been interested in this and was not chosen for it. He'll love that I brought that up. But I don't think there have been people from like Bellingham, Locks County. It's, I just, to add, to me, so, that's why.
The next thing I would, I like to say is I'm working on my, you know, my student voice, you know, project will be on the August but, um, for my summer, the summer retreat, the topic that I will be talking about, it's drive off of like the student voice. You know, my projects and also it will be connecting with learning environment and my goal is probably change the culture of our high school. Um, three topics I think that I would, what I will be talking about would be miscommunication, trust about on student issues, priorities, um, power and balance of leadership role in our high school and opportunity issues of minorities. These are the topics that.
If you weren't very proud. As I know it's your first meeting, so anything here? That's okay. Elected board members, Gary.
Next, um, Friday, Saturday, Sunday will be, um, the first time that I'll be getting together with the other WASD board members, Ken and Olympia. And what, you don't have, however long it's been forever. Um, and we will be in the new WASD building. Which is a huge deal. I'm so excited. I can hardly stand it. Um, so, so that is, that's coming up. That's coming up in the future. So I'm looking forward to it.
Anyone else?
Kind of on a personal note, um, my son, oldest son, was a twenty nineteen graduate at Ferndale. And he has been a camp counselor at YMCA Camp Roger this summer. And I read an article the other day in the, um, New York Times. They were talking about how camp staff was, um, you know, a lot of camps would hire a full staff and then on the day the camp was to open, twenty five percent of them didn't show up. Or a couple of weeks into it, you know, they were like, you know, I've had COVID, you know, life for the past year and a half. I don't want to be here at this camp where I can't leave on the weekends. And so they have, they've had their own traumas and so it's been difficult to keep camps open. But when we talked to my son last weekend, he said that he felt that this was his giving back because he had gone to camp and you know, what it did for him. So it was just like, it was nice to hear. So I'm just bragging about the kid. No, it was, so. He had the greatest summer and got a tattoo the other day. It's not the Catholic bridge, no, but it is a heron to remind him of.
How about my son, one of my sons has.
Yeah, my son, my husband told me that I cried, or I had more tears about that than I did when he graduated. I was like, yeah. Graduated. I don't know.
All right, Dr. Quinn. Oh, well, I, I could talk about that, but uh, this is my wife's book that is officially launching on August third. And so, um, it's available on Amazon, Barnes and Noble and.
Probably Village Books.
Village Books, yeah. You can order it at Village Books and stuff. So, yeah, so it's a, it, it, it's a, she's a physician and so it looks at, and it was written with a genetic biologist or cell biologist anyway over at the Oak Ridge Center in Tennessee. She knows what she's doing. Um, and it looks at how the body feels after an injury and sort of aligns some, not aligns, but then discusses how we might heal our own wounds and issues within our society and communities following those kind of. I'm, I'm butchering her book. She would be horrified. It's been ready for a while and it's published by Tindall Press and they said, but we don't want to publish it during an election. So I think that was smart. And then they said, pandemic's not quite the right time. And it looked like August was going to be a great time. So who knows? But anyway, it's out. And so we're very excited. August third, it's the official launch date. I'm trying to figure out who's gonna play me.
I think you should play yourself.
I thought I'll be a scam. So anyway, yes.
Will that be our next board, uh, or conference, conference movie watching? We'll go see.
I, I do have one thing to share, um, and Heather's here as well. Who has been working this summer on.
Are you Miss Grandma?
Yeah. Um, she's been working with Children of the Seven Sun Productions and you've engaged their services with Heather's help to create another, a second video, this one on land acknowledgement and an educational piece on land acknowledgement. And I think tomorrow you're going to come over and interview me, but Heather doesn't even know this. She said, who else should we interview? So today I contacted the governor and the state superintendent of public instruction to ask them if they wanted to be in our video. Uh, the governor is opposite. I just had to leave something online and they said they'd get that to me. But the state superintendent, his assistant got back to me in two minutes and said, thank you so much for asking. He's out of town, but I'll talk to him first. Week. So I think it will be right up Chris Richter's alley. He's really into since time immemorial curriculum. So anyway, I think the goal right now, Heather, feel free to chime in, but I think the goal, our goal is to have this ready to launch during November for Native American Heritage Month and make it an educational piece that happens, right?
Yep. The goal is to have the actual video then, um, for sure by the end of September with the intent of working with teaching and learning so that we can design some lessons and some time teaching to the content of the land acknowledgement, not land acknowledgement and the history of this place before Native American heritage month, so that we could use. When you read the land acknowledgement, as L I B C has adopted it, there's a lot of vocabulary in there. And so, um, our purpose of the video was for the educational piece and then design some lessons that feed into the classrooms and working with K twelve teaching and learning so that they're also a great level appropriate.
So I just want you to know that work is going on. And then the other thing that made me really happy is our new assistant principal at Ferndale High School, J J Jensen. Who doesn't sound like he's Native American, but, um, is an enrolled member of, of one of the First Nations.
Actually not. He's a descendant.
Oh, descendant.
Descendant of his, he was, um, an enrolled member of the Nuksek tribe and then he ended up being one of the three oh six that got disenrolled.
Oh.
And so he is a descendant of, um, Reservation of Canada.
Okay. But anyway, he, he wrote to me when he heard about this and wants to be involved in the land acknowledgement work. He, he's really stepped up right now. And I can ask Heather to do that. So anyway, that's my.
So I, I appreciate that conversation and that back and forth. It just happened and I, and I, I've had a little bit of back and forth with Jesse. It's just about us as a board and understanding the history in a bigger context. And so I love the idea of the land acknowledgement and understanding that history and what goes towards me. But I also think about the, um, the boarding school stuff that's been coming up lately and, um, what is it as a board? How could we go deeper and understand more about the land we're on and who we're neighbors with and and how is those relations? Um, I happen to do a little bit of that with, with the WASD board, but I would love to do a little bit with our board and the Lummy Nation. And just to, just to have a better understanding. So I think those lessons you're creating for the kiddos would also be useful for us.
Absolutely.
And I think, and I think, you know, Mark says this all the time. We, it's more than the kids. We need to educate our staff and we need to educate their parents because we're starting late in this game and their parents. And so that's why I think these children of the setting sun videos, they're not designed for little kids. They're, you know, they're, but you saw the treaty day video. That's not a, we picked out pieces of it and made it work at different age levels, but we're educating the community. We hope.
I actually am really impressed, Lea, that you said that. Um, I think there's a lot that I keep saying there's a lot to be taught. There's a lot to learn and there's so much out there. Um, I wish someday we could take the board out and round Lummy. I don't know if we have already.
And Sean, we never crossed paths since I've been here.
I've been. When kids talk about it, you know, in classrooms or this area and to the teachers, then they will know what they're talking about. Um, you know where the cold is? No. And that's simple. It's just a place out there. It's a store. And it's a place where, you know, a lot of the natives go because it's right there. And you'll hear a lot about that. Do you know where, of course, you should know where Wathliam is. Yes. So.
I don't.
But we haven't done that in.
No, but I'm sorry. That's what I'm saying is that we need to.
We need, yes.
I would like, uh, this is my dream is, uh, we have a salmon barbecue, like we always do, I'll eat food. And, um, come and visit. Don't drive by just because the casino is there. Don't go and get gassed just because it's right there. Come into the reservation and drive around. You'll see how beautiful it is. Um, the videos you take that we saw, it shows how beautiful it is. And if you just take a drive out, it takes like twenty minutes around the whole reservation. And that's it. But there is a lot to see out there. And, um, I hope someday we can pinpoint a day so we can do that, you know?
We certainly can.
Yeah. We can have a welcoming. And, uh, we always want to celebrate. And we always want to offer food. So. Yeah.
So to answer your question, Lea, I would have, I would be happy to help coordinate that. Um, we have an abundance of resources. We have abundance of people and just like Chairman Solomon said when he was here the other day, you know, we're very giving people, part of our inherent responsibility is to educate people about us and our place. And the more that we understand each other and the more that we learn from each other, the more apt we are to be more cohesive. It creates that understanding and that empathy for each one of us. And the more that we have those opportunities to share that with each other, the more it, it creates that cohesion with us. So I would be more than willing to help coordinate that for the board. That is something that the board wanted.
There was an article shared, um, by the Salt Lake, or written in the Salt Lake City Tribune and I follow it on Facebook because my son is in school there. But the, um, totem pole, the Lummy totem pole was going through Salt Lake City. They talked about it and people were making comments like, you know, where's the Lummy Nation anywhere and sort of thing. And I was like, they're the greatest neighbors ever.
Like other places.
Oh, yeah.
Very proud to see it though, as it's going through us. I find out these people in there.
Her tells you directions.
Oh, uh huh.
She calls it the meet table.
We should look for a time.
Yeah.
Definitely want to coincide with the salmon. All right. And then administrative team, vector team. Fresh out, okay. Well, the final items on the agenda are the consent agenda. The superintendent consent agenda consists of items delegated to the superintendent for actions, but requiring the board's, uh, final approval. The board's consent agenda consists of routine items for the board to, uh, address. The board has had an opportunity to review all of these items prior to this meeting and is therefore able to expedite our work by taking action on them as a group rather than individually. So these same items are also available for public review on Board Docs. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent consent agenda and the board consent agenda as attached and.
All right. It's been moved to approve both the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda as attached or two and made a part of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, the motion carries. So we've now reached the end of the agenda of the July twenty seventh board meeting of the Ferndale School Board. Our next regular business meeting will be held the last Tuesday of August, which is August thirty first. So thank you all for participating tonight. I hereby declare this meeting adjourned.